On our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body outside of the public hearing on the budget may do so after being acknowledged by an alderperson in which they'll be invited to the podium. General protocol is to introduce yourself, state your address for the record, and make sure that the microphone green button is lit so that way we can pick you up on the recording. If you're wishing to speak on the item related to the public hearing on the budget, that'll be held separately and I'll give some instructions when we get to that item on our agenda. Also tonight, all the persons you recognize were not using the voting machine, so we're gonna take a moment after each vote to capture any of the votes in the negative. So if you just bear with us up here for the minutes, we can capture that. Let's see. Item number five is the minutes of the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll motion, make a motion that we accept them and place them on file.
A motion by Blazer to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zurflue. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six on our report on our agenda this evening is my report. Good evening, members of city staff, council members, and those here watching from home. The mayor's youth council has officially started their year with eight new members, bringing the group to over twenty high school students from Wisconsin Rapids, Lincoln, and Assumption, as well as Port Edwards. Last week, they held their meeting at the Wisconsin Rapids Waterworks and Lighting Commission with many of their members and all advisory members not having been through the water filter plant here in the city. So it was a good experience for them to see behind the scenes when the water comes into the city before it moves through into our water system. I knew this year elected officers have been chosen where a new president was elected to lead the group. No, neither of our student observers or the youth council president could be here due to the holiday week, but we expect them to be at our future meetings. The group is currently reviewing nine project proposals, which they'll refine as they select their 2018, 2019 priorities. A few of the projects they are considering are a family teen movie series and a downtown park, the zoo improvements that are proposed in the master plan, as well as implementation through the $300,000 gift that was provided to the city, the bike and recreational trail signage, and enhancements to the farmer's market. And the beautification council update, you have noticed, probably noticed, the evergreen kissing balls are going up throughout downtown yesterday, just in time for rekindle the spirit. That project, again, was 100% donor funded, and you don't want to miss the annual Christmas tree walk, which is scheduled at the Southwood County Historical Museum here in a few weeks. Important to note, the beautification council's tree theme this year is recycling, which I, probably just as much as you, looking forward to what their interpretation of that might be. You can catch this tree and many other trees at the at the Christmas Tree Walk, December 1st, 2nd, 8th, and 9th, from noon to 4:00, and December 7th, from 4:00 to 8:00. Next month, the beautification council will meet at the cultural center just down the street at their temporary location inside the Johnson Hills Building to get insight on the Jackson Street Arts Initiative, which is their new proposed facility at the corner of Jackson and Saratoga Street. And the agenda includes reviewing potential project engagement opportunities for the spring and summer of 2019. On the riverfront project, the majority of the restoration and landscaping has been completed with the installation of handrails under the Riverview Expressway Bridge along the fishing pier and along Second Street, yet to to be completed yet this winter. Some of this work will spill into 2019, along with the installation of benches, picnic tables, grills, and fitness park stations that were fundraised through the leadership project, as well as many donors throughout the community. On the airport, construction of the airport expansion, apron expansion to accommodate larger and more and more frequent planes is complete, aside from a favor, which is American asphalt, having to finish some work in the spring. The project was fully funded by the state budget allocation. And if you haven't checked out the drone footage, be sure to see it. It's available on the city's Facebook page, as well as the airport's Facebook page. Also, as the season is now over, we, by our record and by our count, between 800 and 900 jets and turboprop and other variety of aircraft were through our airport this year, a dramatic number of over previous counts in its exist, in the airport's existence. We're now working on selecting the consultant to build the commission hangar. This is a required process when utilizing state funds. The large hangar will be constructed next year with the remaining allocation of state monies, the $4 million that was granted to the airport. When the scope is defined, the project will be designed and then let for construction bids. Also, another important airport note was if, by our count, fuel sales doubled over last year's volumes, and last year's volumes doubled over the previous year. So we're really looking forward to another busy season this coming year, probably come May, and then ultimately, when the hangar's built, that airport will finally have its construction activities, at least in large part, complete. It's been a number of years of capital improvements out there, so it's been exciting. Update on the YMCA Boys and Girls Club redevelopment of the Rapids Mall. With much of the environmental remediation work complete, the demolition of the mall will be underway in the coming weeks, and we understand that they're gonna be continuing to share updates with the community on that project. On the 2019 budget, I'd like to thank our finance director, Tim DeSorci, and our department heads for their time and preparation with the process. Now, having concluded a series of extensive public meetings on the budget, I'm optimistic new alders and the public are familiar with what is planned and the reasons for such projects. As I stated in my transmittal letter that preceded the budget summary, our goal throughout preparations is to continue to provide high-quality and efficient service while embracing long-term objectives through smart investments in our community. Such smart investments are targeted at improving our attractiveness and quality of life as a city, and desirable elements have been shown such to influence people when choosing a place to live, work, and invest in. On the city clerk vacancy, we concluded interviews this week and expect to call a special meeting in early December to consider an appointment. I'd like to thank city staff, attorney Schill, and alderperson Kubashak for participating in either the first or second round interviews. And at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, I would ask that we coordinate a time perhaps around a committee meeting night or off-committee meeting night in the first week of December to consider the appointment. In the category of attended, hosted, or participated, we hosted Washington School's second graders here in the council chambers, as well as in the police department for a tour, joined alderperson Zurflue at Lincoln High School for Career Day to talk about public service and elected roles. We hosted the Wisconsin Honey Producers Association Annual Conference here in the city, welcomed that group, and they had a full, full convention here at the MEED. Did the puck drop for the River Kings' season opener a couple of weeks ago. Last week, we hosted our first housing workshop, which is our public opinion, our public input meeting at the Centrelia Center about the proposed senior housing project that will begin construction after they submit their plans and seek city approval in December, we expect. And that basically concludes my report. So we'll move on to item number seven on our agenda is consider confirmation of my appointments to the planning commission. Attachment number two in your packets, council members, of which I'll read, "The following appointment is submitted for your approval. Under the planning commission, Tom Bray is appointed to fill the vacancy created by the removal of the public works director from the commission through the most recent approval of the zoning code with the term expiring May 1, 2020." Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make that motion to nominate or to confirm that appointment.
A motion by Blazer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Catnaugh. Any discussion on the appointment? See no requests to speak. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item eight, consider a resolution setting the equivalent unit charge, ERU charge, for the stormwater utility management, stormwater management utility. See attachment number three in your packets. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item? A motion to approve by Raoul. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any discussion on attachment number three? Move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number nine is public hearing on the 2019 city budget. With that, I will open the public hearing. And I think as a, as a note, the finance director, maybe Tim, did you want to indicate, probably for item 10, more or less, but I guess I would open the public hearing. Did you have anything you wanted to open up with a comment on that?
Well, just basically, an old person's desk and was on the table for the public is the public hearing document had a few, a few changes. We got some information in and we had some revised revenue estimates, which allowed a $40,000 reduction in the levy because we had other revenues, other revenue source that came in based on information. Also adjusted it for the levy certifications that we got from Wood County and the school district result and the school levy credit we got today. So it reflects exactly what the 2019 tax rate will be on the second to last page.
All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. Individuals wishing to address the body on the, on the budget may do so at this time. And Mary Jo, just a reminder, make sure that the microphone is on. Hit the push, the button that says push. Sorry, there's a word push at the bottom of it. You just push the word, and it should light up green.
Okay, it lit up. That means it's on, correct? My name is Mary Jo Haney. I live on 14th Street South. I have been a resident of Wisconsin Rapids for 55 years, and during the last six and a half years, I am sad to say I have seen this city in a decline that is very hard for me to reconcile myself with, because this was a wonderful place to raise our family. I don't feel it is that place now. First of all, I would like a clarification. After reading the budget, I see that our bonded indebtedness is $5,400,000. Is that correct?
That's what's being proposed in the 2018 budget.
Yes, that is what's being proposed, correct? Okay, I don't want to make any mistakes. Is the $2.5 million second request for the aquatic center in that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We have heard that our mill rate is going to be reduced. I did a little math, and now maybe with what Mr. DeSorci said, this has changed. But the mill rate would be reduced by 49 cents per thousand. Is that still right?
Actually, 52 cents, 53 cents per thousand.
Okay, and that, that sounds very good, except, as you all know, this summer, the entire city was reassessed, all properties to 100%. So while we're getting a mill rate reduction, I don't think I'm going to receive a reduction in my taxes. Maybe I will, but I was reassessed a hefty amount, so I doubt it very much. And with that in mind, I would like to make the following statement. You've proposed the bonding for the 2019 budget. First, the city bonded last year for $2.5 million for the aquatic park. Now the mayor is asking to bond another $2.5 million to bring that to $5 million. This is still going to leave the city short, maybe about $7 million. I don't know, because I haven't seen all the figures. I'm all in favor of a swimming pool for the kids in this community, but I think we could take that $5 million right now and build a very lovely swimming pool without having an aquatic water park that is kind of the Taj Mahal. That's my opinion. We keep doing this, and we keep adding more and more consulting fees to our budget. Over the last six and a half years, the mayor, with the council's approval, and not all of you were on the council at that time, have spent over $2 million in consulting fees. That's a lot of money. Now, I realize some of those were for proposed projects that always bring in consultants to do, but a lot of them were not. And recently, the council approved an $8,000 expenditure, which the person who was in charge of this admitted he could do, except he might make some mistakes, and then it would have to be redone. And I'm sitting there scratching my head. This is a city employee. They're supposed to know what their department does. If not, can't you go study it, find out what the requirements are? We also have a city attorney that could help. But no, instead, they bought, they paid an $8,000 consulting fee. In the proposed bonding, the council has, or there is an expenditure for the proposed East Grand Avenue project, and I'm wondering what items are in there and at what cost. And I wonder, Mr. Zurflue, because you are chairman of finance, am I correct? Can you tell me what some of those items are and what they cost?
What's the specific question that you asked, Mary Jo?
I would like to know what some of the items are on the proposed East Grand Project in the, in the bonding that you're bonding for. I'd like to know what some of them are and what their cost is.
So you're asking, what are the components of the street reconstruction of East Grand Avenue?
No, there are other components. I believe you're, they're planning to put new lights in.
Correct. New streetlights as part of the project. That's correct.
Correct. And there are benches, am I not right?
Right. Residents have sought, and there was an approved downtown streetscape plan prior to my time, I believe in 2010, 2009, that called for certain standards for when our streets are redone in the downtown district, and the proposed project is in accordance of that plan, as well as the streetscape elements that were called out.
That's fine, but I'm, I'm wondering if the finance committee asked what some of these items were, what the costs were. Are we buying top-of-the-line? Are we buying moderate? This all, this all contributes to the cost of a project. And I think some of us in the city know that the proposed lights in Demet's Park were very expensive, and those were rejected and another light put in, or going to be put in. I don't think they're in yet, but I don't know. But I, Mr. Zurflue, was that a question your committee asked?
We did talk about the specific project, I believe, the last, the last meeting or the one before, and there was discussion about scaling back some of the, what's the word I'm looking for? Some of the like nicer, nicer things. I forget actually which alderperson brought that up, but.
Alderperson Blazer.
Alderperson Blazer, okay.
And if I understand correctly, you will have a chance to do that, because even if this budget is, is passed, this bonding issue will get re-looked at. Am I correct?
Specific to that project, that was our, that's what we discussed at the last meeting, yes?
Yes, okay. So items could be reevaluated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's also, I believe, $100,000 in the budget for beautification, and I couldn't find anywhere what that was for. Does anybody know?
Where, what page are you citing, Mary Jo?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't write the page down. The budget is not easy to read for a layperson. I will admit that.
I'm not familiar with $100,000 being allocated for any beautification project, so that's why I'm seeking further clarification.
Okay.
Looking at my finance director's giving me a puzzled look over there as well. Well, that's what I'm wondering, is if the streetscape.
Okay, maybe that's it.
Yeah, I think you might be referring to, we discussed it at the last finance committee meeting, where $100,000 added to the East Grand Reconstruction Project for streetscape.
Okay.
I think that's what you might be referring to.
So those are trees and shrubs? Is that what I'm to understand?
Benches, bike parking, street trees. I think the area on beautification you're concerned about on page 15, 15, is a grant that the city was successful in receiving, which was $25,000 for beautification from the railroad. And we carry those dollars forward every year because we have not spent those dollars, have identified a project for them, of which it's been mentioned that some of the East Grand project that are deemed beautification, I would argue that bike accommodations are not beautification, nor are benches for residents who need a place to sit when they're walking downtown. But if there are areas of beautification, certainly, we could use the CN grant, the railroad grant for that. But I think it's on page 15, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
It was a gift that the city received.
Thank you.
Sure.
You mentioned grants. Grants are not free. If I'm not mistaken, the city has to pay dollar for dollar toward a grant. Am I correct?
Depends on the grant.
But they do have to pay, correct?
Depends on the grant.
Are you saying some grants are free?
Right. Some grants are unencumbered. So the railroad grant that the city wrote and was successful in receiving was not a matching grant. It was a pure $25,000 check written to the city.
Okay, $25,000, and that's going to the $100,000.
We haven't designated it. So in this budget, we carry those dollars forward, and the council decides how they wish to spend those dollars.
Okay, all right. I also have another question. Why at this time, when our city is not growing, we have seen buildings taken down? On the east side, we have vacant lots that have been there for a couple of years. Are we taking on this big, long-term debt? I don't, I really don't understand it. I agree, some of the proposals need to be done. I certainly agree with the new garbage way they're gonna pick up garbage. I think that's wonderful. But for a city that shows no growth, per se, I can't understand why we're taking on a debt of $5,400,000 at this time. I know there's plans, but sometimes you have to put things in priority, and I don't, my personal feeling is that previous councils have not done a very good job of this. In my own home, if I have things that need doing, I prioritize them according to how I'm going to pay for them. And that's how, I believe, we feel the city should work. I urge the council this evening not to approve the budget, but to send it back to committee, to be looked at again, reexamined, and things brought out or, or taken out. You all receive $500 a month to be on the council. We expect that you will come to each meeting, whether it be a council meeting or a committee meeting, fully informed, having read all your materials, and be able to ask probing questions and get answers. That's what we elected you to do. And sometimes, watching council meetings, I don't see that happening. And watching committee meetings, I don't see that happening all the time either. So I think that maybe you ought to turn the spotlight on yourselves and ask, am I doing the best I can with the money through our tax dollar and what we're getting from other sources for this city, or am I just letting things slide past me? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Bob? I think the microphone might be still on.
Thank you very much. Bob McElvein. I live on 11th, no, I live on 14th Street South in Wisconsin Rapids. I live in a duplex condo, and I, I guess I too am a little bit concerned about property taxes. We have about 1,800 square feet in our condo. I live on a half of a lot, not a full lot, but those condos, each side has a half a lot. My property taxes have been running $5,000 a year. In my opinion, that's outrageous for a small condo that size on a small lot. I see by your, by your budget, in 2016, you were $11,600,000 some change. This year, it's gonna be $12,326,000. You know, that's another $700,000. And I guess I kind of agree with Mary Jo. I managed JCPenney over here for many years, and I'm disappointed to see it go. I tried to save it, was involved when they tried to close it the last time I called in corporate office, and had success. However, we were very careful how I spent money in that store. I had to take care of the, the heating and air conditioning and, and equipment in the building, but we were very careful to make sure it fit in with the sales. If the sales weren't growing, we had, we had to cut our expenditures to a bare minimum. And I think the city too is probably not challenging enough with these expenses. As the mayor knows, I'm always beating him up about the roads, the streets. Property tax owners expect the streets as a good place that they see their money being spent. And I know we do some of that, and I'm sure the mayor would disagree with me because we've had many disagreements over it. I used to live in Grand Rapids, lived in a 3,000-square-foot, two-story house, nice structure backed up to Two Mile Creek on an acre and a half lot. I paid about $3,000 a year for that. I realize Grand Rapids is a different community. It's, has a lot different types of expenses. So I just, I guess I wish the council would do the same thing that Mary Jo asked. Really review this like you're spending the money out of your own pocket. That's how I spent JCPenney's money, because part of that money that I got paid out of pennies did come out of the profits of that store. Thank you.
Thank you. Other individuals wishing to address the body? And any matters pertaining to the budget? Any individuals wishing to address the body? And any projects, severe moment to address the body if you came here to speak to the council on any matters related to the budget?
Good evening, everybody.
If you could just state your name and, and your address, please.
Yeah, my name is Daniel Charles Crowley. I'm newly located here from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and the address is 730 Chase Street. Mary Jo will probably be mad at me, but I see in your budget, there's no space in there to deal with the issues at hand that maybe some of your city fathers know of, but they don't want to address, is what's being done or is it budgeted in here for homeless people and the issue at hand? Is there anything in the budget that I'm overlooking that it doesn't say allocated money for homeless?
You're seeking an answer to your question? No, there is no direct dollars for homelessness program in our city.
I think we're, your community is relying too much on Wisconsin Rapids to take on the homelessness, and believe it or not, if I'm not mistaken, somebody could say wrong to me, but there's only 50 beds available in Wisconsin, I'm sorry, excuse me, in Stevens Point to accommodate the whole area at hand, probably eh, 30-mile radius for people to deal with homeless people. I think there should be something added to the budget for that matter. And again, there's nothing else mentioned on here for transportation. Isn't your community and township and city involved in transportation issues that are at hand? I understand that some of the monies are allocated towards your local cab company. I don't see it in here for transportation needs. Doesn't mean medical needs, it just means transportation needs. And I am willing to meet with people and speak with them, especially about the homeless issue. I mean, Salvation Army only has a budget so much. They're over by Walmart collecting money, and it seems to me that some of the local nonprofits are not addressing it fast enough, and this is gonna grow. This issue is gonna grow from this budget to the next budget to other budgets. And I have a solution, which I brought to the mayor's, a jet, attention, is there's a property right on Main Street that's empty, along with Adam. I spoke with him about it. I'd be willing, as a director of the nonprofit that I started up here, to leasing that space and adoring and taking on to address the homeless issue. The building is just sitting there, and I believe it's two or three years it's been empty. And I believe that, speaking with Adam off the record, they're looking for somebody to purchase it and make it into a prosperous entity. But again, it's still sitting there. But again, it's still sitting there. We wouldn't have to take people all the way to Stevens Point to address the homeless people. And to wake up the people here, excuse me, is, believe it or not, a lot of your homeless population is actually sleeping right now in your Walmart parking lot. And Walmart seems to be okay and cool with that. And there are other places in the state of Wisconsin that Walmart has open arms type of situation to help people in need. Once again, I'm bringing it to your attention that I would like to help the homeless people deal with some of your transportation issues. I don't see a budget for transportation. And one other thing, I'm not looking to be on your budget, but you don't, in your city government, don't even have a lobbyist. So I would like to volunteer my services to be a lobbyist, to be basically a lobbyist as an activist for people's rights. There's a lot of landlord-tenant issues that I see up here that are not addressed properly. And I, as well as the homelessness. So I appreciate your time, and I don't think you should agree to the budget, because of course, there's nothing in there for homeless nor transportation. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. As a point of clarification, there is a shared ride taxi program that the city funds in our budget for transportation, and homeless issues are generally covered by the county human services, health and human services programs, just as a point of reference.
Okay, well, since you're bringing that up.
Different counties do it differently, since you said it from Milwaukee.
Okay, well, bringing to your attention here too is, what's your issues on minority-owned businesses, DBE businesses, disadvantaged businesses? I don't see any type of directory in your directory addressing the DBE business, disadvantaged minority-owned businesses, any kind of incentives for people to want to start their own businesses. And of course, in any kind of budgets, I do know, I believe city as well as the state, that you have to take all people in consideration in proposals for state and I believe city government under DBE businesses, minority-owned businesses and such. I could be wrong, but I'm, I don't see it in your paperwork, I don't see it in your flyers, your brochures. And I think there should be a very good incentive for people who want to start their own business and maybe help out the community and learn at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Come onto the podium.
Everybody, my name is Matt Sikolski. I reside in 121 Levine Avenue in Port Edwards, Wisconsin. Good evening again, and I'm here on behalf to voice my enthusiastic support of the East River Bank Improvement Project. I'm the Program Operations Director of the Southwood County YMCA, as well as a CBB Board Member. And I'm here tonight to, again, give full support on behalf of the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club of that project. I'm also the race director for the Bridge to Bridge 5K event in June. This June will be our fourth running of that event, and it takes place right in downtown Wisconsin Rapids, where a lot of the East River Bank Improvement projects are taking place. A big part of that race is to raise dollars for our chronic disease programs at the YMCA. But most importantly, and this is very important to me, is I always feel it is a celebration of the downtown area in Wisconsin Rapids. Now, a lot of our participants are from this city. And one of my goals is, is really to open people's eyes of really the blessing of that area and what that downtown area is all about. It's a phenomenal area just for our natural resources. I've been in this, living in this area for four years. Before that, I lived fourteen years in Chicago. And one thing I was really struck by on this course downtown is really how clean our city, our streets here. Do you guys ever realize that? Being from Chicago, I have a different perspective. So part of this race is to really give people a different perspective of how great our downtown area is. I do run that race, or that road, a lot. I do utilize the path. The new path on Second Street is absolutely tremendous. Just the landscaping, goes right down by the river. I mean, it's really something. And the proposed work that will be done in Veterans Park will just enhance not only our race, but what I believe is the city itself. And I will speak as a citizen, and as I mentioned, you know, I'm out there a lot, I'm a runner. And what I feel when I'm out there is, I'm on that course, it brings a sense of joy to my life. It just, and there's a sense of ownership, like this is, this is where I belong, I take pride where I'm running. And I think as a goal of this improvement project is to have all our citizens feel that way. And most importantly is, at this stage in my life, I'm a little bit older, it's not always easy for me to get out there. For me to run in that course, on those trails, it's motivating. So I feel the work that you all continue to do will motivate people and improve the quality of life. So that's what I wanted to say tonight. Mayor Verink, City Council, keep up the good work. Have a great Thanksgiving, and God bless you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the body on the budget or the public hearing? I've got two pieces of correspondence that folks indicated in email to me that they were unable to attend the council meeting, or in this case, formulated direct email to the alderman. The author is Brett Salschider, the CEO of the YMCA. He said, "That said being, please use this email as my or slash the city's support below for the riverfront Phase II improvements. We see interdependence of the YMCA Boys and Girls Club project to the efforts being led by the city and the East River Bank improvements. We see great opportunities to enhance existing programming cited lunch by the river, farmer's market, et cetera, in parentheses. We do this with community asset as well as look to the future opportunities it affords. With the significant investment being made in the downtown area, it is important that investments are being made to the East River Bank to make this central place and attractor for our residents and complement or work congruently with other private developments in the area." He apologizes for the brevity and unfortunate in his lack of attendance here tonight, but they closed on the New Markets Tax Credits, which generated four million dollars in equity for the project. The second one, which I believe you all got a copy of, and it was sitting on my stand when I walked in tonight, and is from the Wood County Health Department. Dated November 20, 2018, "Dear common council members, on behalf of Wood County Health Department and Healthy People Wood County Coalition, we write this letter in support of the continued funding and completion of Phase II of the East River Bank Revitalization Project. Wood County Health Department and Health System Partners Aspiris and Marshfield Clinic are mandated through the Affordable Care Act to complete a healthy, a community health assessment every three years. The most recent community health assessment data shows a strong need for systems, policy, and environmental changes that enhance communities that support physical activity as well as social cohesion and engagement opportunities. Healthy People Wood County coalitions are tasked with creating improvement plans and coalition teams to address these needs. Recreate Health Coalition has worked closely with the city of Wisconsin Rapids to implement the River Riders Bike Share Program, increased bike and walking trail signage mapping, increased bike, public bike parking facilities, as well as worked with the mayor's youth council to research and start a bicycle benefits program that would reward bicyclists through promotional items at supporting businesses. The East River Bank Revitalization Project is more than riverbank stabilization and trails. Healthy People Wood County Coalition support and view the East River Bank Revitalization Project as a means to increase opportunities to physical activity, increase connectivity of the trail system, which provides safe and non-vehicular means of transportation, and enhances places for residents to be socially connected. The proposed updates will provide a useful and beautiful destination for residents and will drive economic development in the downtown district. We believe it will act as a catalyst for community development in this region while also providing opportunities for community-led identification of infrastructure improvements and increased access to transportation, physical activity, and recreational opportunities." Yours in Health, Susan Comfortman. Health Officer, Director of Wood County Health Department, Kristi Eggie. Community Health Planner, Health Promotion Supervisor, and Sarah Soluski, Recreate Health Coalition Coordinator. So just wanted to read those into the record since they were provided to us in advance of tonight's public hearing. With no other individuals wishing to address the body, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. I will move on to item number ten, which is consider a resolution adopting the tax levy in 2019 city Wisconsin Rapids budget. Before I do so, I want to thank the individuals for making it a point to be here tonight and engaging in the budget process and voicing your opinions. It's very important, I think, to, for me, and obviously all the, can't speak for the council members, but I would go on a limb and think that, think the council members appreciate that as well. So all the persons, what are your wishes regarding attachment number four in your packets? Sorry, and it's a new one on your desk, which is replacement number four. Thanks. So it's a color, color copy. It doesn't say number four in the upper corner, but it looks like this.
Yeah, the attachment, the levy changed because of the information we got from the county and school district.
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes. All the person grab.
Tim, with the raise in the levy, could you tell me what this is going to cost the taxpayers?
With the, can you repeat that again?
With the raise in the levy limit, what is that going to cost the taxpayers?
The raise in the levy?
Right.
Basically, it's, it's, well, this year's a difficult year because of the reassessment. You know, reassessment years are always difficult because based on your class of property and things, your assessment can go up. You know, if the average assessment is X, if your assessment goes up greater than that, it's basically reassessment is redistribution of the tax levy. So based on where you are from the average increase in the assessment, it can affect your tax rate. If you're above that average increase, you could see a tax increase. If you're below it, you could see a tax decrease. So basically, the city's levy went up ninety-eight thousand dollars, resulting in it, and because of the reassessment, the rate is a reduction of four point three percent. So depending on, you know, where you are in that average assessment, what I can do is I will do a quick calculation for you to help kind of understand it, because let's say your assessment went up six percent. On a hundred thousand dollar house, the local rate would go up eighteen dollars, based on the way the tax levy is. So it kind of depends on what your assessment, kind of what percentage of your reassessment went up. I know that's kind of confusing, but reassessment years are always, you know, are hard to understand and, because everyone, classes of property go up differently. It's not just an across-the-board percentage increase for all properties. Does that make sense?
And if your assessment was unchanged, for example, it would scale accordingly, right? I think so, that's the thing that, like you're saying, to answer the question is difficult based upon what people's assessments. I mean, if you live in a three hundred thousand dollar house and it's worth three hundred thousand dollars and your assessment went up, you're going to pay more in taxes. I mean, that's just, it's pretty simple. Not because of the budget, but because of the assessment, right? Your assessment went up on your property, right? Are there other requests to speak? And I think just for page twenty-nine of the budget, I was just going to mention where the tax rate calculations, I think just call your attention to that page if you didn't look at that previously. I don't know, Tim, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say that, you know, our school levy, school tax levy credit had a slight decrease also this year from last year. And the good news is, is that our lottery credit increased from a hundred and twenty-three dollars to a hundred and seventy-seven dollars, so about a fifty-four dollar increase in the levy, our lottery credit, and the first dollar credit went up about three dollars. So it's kind of just.
I'll take up some of the dead air. I guess back to Mary Jo's point, when she had requested that information, that hundred thousand dollars when it was brought up. First, I want to thank Jo and the mayor, they provided me with hundreds of pages of documents I got to read in my deer stand. And I specifically asked about projects and costs and line items and budgets and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but once we approved the budget, those are approving those projects to be let for bid, correct? Or is there any further discussion on any of those projects?
I guess my answer would be you're approving the allocation for those funds and thereby those projects, yes. That would be my interpretation. Now, there may be processes, and I think the question was pertaining to East Grand in particular, the state scope of that work. And once that project is let, which it already has, right, the project has already been let, there are some local scope items that, that we requested through the budget process, which would also be funded tonight with, if the budget allocation is approved. Now, unless there's any further Public Works approval of, you know, selecting the lowest bid and those types of things, that maybe just inform the conversation if there are those steps.
Yeah, so the DOT portion is currently out for bid right now. The city's still responsible for the underground infrastructure and then some of the landscaping and streetscaping type components, so the furnishings, landscaping, irrigation, those sorts of things. There may be some other aspects that could still be looked at and reviewed. But primarily, the bulk of the project is already set.
Okay, thank you. But I, sorry, back to a hundred thousand, because when it was presented on, and I'll say I was part of it, is that at that meeting, that hundred thousand dollars was added to the budget, but at that time, we didn't question it. Since then, I did send an email, and I appreciate the mayor and Jo getting back to me. But that hundred thousand dollars class, what, what, what that included, and I'll just read it off so everybody knows if they don't know. What I was told was twenty-five hundred dollars for benches, there's four of them per bench, fifteen hundred dollars for trash receptacles, there's four of those, six hundred dollars for bike racks, there's five of those, five hundred dollars per tree, there's twenty-two trees, fifty thousand dollars in irrigation, is that pole irrigation? Okay. And so, and then twenty-five thousand for, I believe it was landscaping. So that, that was extra hundred thousand dollars, that was it, added in at the last finance meeting, which I didn't question until after the fact. So my, my concern, as it has been, and I've been stating all along, is that I believe these projects, some of them are, in my opinion, are worthwhile. I don't know to the extent that there are. You know, it concerns me that there's almost half a million dollars for a river balcony, which in, in the documentation, there's, there's, there's money to be set aside for tuck pointing underneath that balcony. But once this is let for bid, it doesn't include any other issues being addressed along that river wall, which I wanted to see be done before we did a project, make sure that river wall's stable, since it is over a hundred years. And I did receive an email regarding information on, from Jo, which I appreciate, very responsive, I appreciate that. On, you know, on the wall, things that were, there was what, a hole and a half dug and a couple of boreholes. I still don't feel confident that, you know, based on that, and I think even in the, in the document we looked at finance, it didn't even include, did not include a visual inspection of the exterior of the wall from, from the riverside. And so these projects I'm, I'm concerned about, and I guess I don't know how to address that at this point, other than voting no for the budget, or if there's a way to hold out these, because we're inheriting these projects, because they, granted, we should have probably had a meeting earlier on and gone through these projects, because we inherited these from a previous council where they were gone through by the, by that, by that previous council. But some of us have not had that opportunity, aside from asking ourselves. And so I don't know if there's a way to hold these out yet and discuss, or at least have a committee, a whole meeting where we can discuss, go by, line by line, and discuss some of the scope of that project before it's let for bid. What's already been let has to be let, and everybody knows East Grand's been long overdue to be replaced. But some of the, some of the niceties, whether or not we really need, need them, if it's responsible to be spending that money. And, you know, everybody talks about Phase II, and I think Phase II would look nice, but the bottom line is concrete's going to be replaced with concrete, and you're going to, you're going to run on that, the new concrete, or you're going to run on the old concrete, it's still going to be concrete down there. And for a million and a half dollars, is it, we're getting a prettier looking concrete, but, or the space is going to be pretty, but it's still concrete between the two bridges, and we're still going to have races on them, we're still going to have lunch. and we're still going to have races on them, we're still going to have lunch by the river down there, and we're still going to do all the other activities that are held down there. But I think Jo is going to respond to my question about holding out, or at least addressing some of the scope before it's being let out to bid.
Right, so that project has not been let for bid, and staff is currently working on putting estimates together and seeing if we can't figure out how to allocate funds to do those maintenance components as well. And so, I think that that's a good topic for us to bring up at a future Public Works or Finance Committee meeting, you know, for those types of discussions to continue and to satisfy the council's questions prior to formally letting that project for bid.
And which, that was which project, the East River?
That's correct.
I mean, the East Grand Avenue or East River Bank?
East River Bank.
Okay. So, if we approve the budget tonight, that project will not be let for bid, and it's still open for discussion whether or not we want to have a $400,000 river balcony in there yet, or those type of things? Or once we approve it, that's going to be part of the bid letting?
Well, I would say we still need to let it. So, I think the scope needs to be defined. We're proposing a scope in the budget, and if there's issues with the scope or the dollar figure in total, that should be addressed, I think, tonight. But I do think, you know, there's an opportunity, if there's a desire to have that scope discussed, that we certainly can have that before the project is let, because the last thing we want to do is decline the bids right after the project. I think we've talked about that at Finance.
Yeah, and I don't think that's good for us as a city to be doing that, and that's why I think everything needs to be in order before we do that, because I think that's bad business, and we don't want to have that reputation either.
Fair enough.
And, you know, we're still a long ways away. I'm not in favor of bonding $2 million, $2.5 million for the second half of the pool, being that we're not there yet. So, at that point, we're still able to turn, when we decide to bond, Tim, is that something that we can decide that we only need to bond $2.5 million this year for the construction projects, street construction projects, and not bond for the pool projects?
Well, usually before, you know, usually it's early spring when we go to the market to the bond for our projects, and depending where the status of those projects are, you know, we'll adjust the debt issue accordingly, like, just like this year, we had proposed in the budget, you know, a larger debt issue of $6 million, and we ended up borrowing four because, you know, as we got into the spring and stuff, some projects weren't going to come fruition, so we adjusted the amount of the debt issue accordingly.
Yeah, I just don't want to bond $2.5 million and have it sit with the other million and a half, and we're not using it. You know, I don't think that's responsible spending either.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Other requests to speak? I will point a clarification on the point that was raised in the open hearing regarding lack of growth. When we prepared the budget, one of the sections is under the question of levy limits, and levy limits, without getting into the technical details of it, is based upon net new construction. And I don't have 2013 in front of me, but I have the last five years, so I don't have six, but I have five. In the last five years, the city has experienced in total over $46 million of net new construction. That is on top of the $60 million of valuation that the city assessor had picked up through revaluation. So, no matter which component you want to look at, I just want to point out the fact, the facts, basically, the numbers of which our budget has been based off of the last number of years. So, for 2019, based, the number of net new construction we're basing the budget off of is $14,196,000. Last year, $9 million, and 9.5 million, the previous year, six and a half, I don't have to go through the rest of the numbers, but just wanted, from a context perspective, share the information that we utilize when we can make sure we're compliant with levy limit law in Wisconsin. Alderman Graff?
I have quite a bit of things on my list that I don't agree with in this budget. I think we'll start in the Public Works. We have a Centralia parking lot budgeted for next year for $300,000, but we have a leaky roof on the building. I would not be in favor of passing any money or setting aside money for a parking lot when we have a roof that's leaking. I don't know the cost estimates of roof. I would think we'd have to take a better look at what that roof would cost for a replacement or patch, and possibly looking at doing the Centralia parking lot in the future when the North Point development is finished. I think this would be inappropriate to have it in this year's budget. If I remember right, and Tim, I'll ask you the question, I believe that $300,000 was going to be bonded for, or is that out of the general fund?
No, actually, when we first opened up the Centralia Center, we started putting $25,000 of building reserves aside in each budget. So, we've built up that fund to about $360,000, so the parking lot was going to be funded out of those replacement, that replacement account.
Mr. Terry, do you have any idea what a new roof would cost, or to patch the roof that is leaking on the Centralia?
So, we've, we're investigating costs for patching at this time, and are anticipating that, you know, we may look for replacement about four or five years down the road. That roof is only 15 years old, and so, it shouldn't be ready for replacement at this time, but, you know, we continue to work with roofers to take a look at that, and some of that survey has been conducted, we just don't have the numbers yet. And obviously, during any budget year, if we discover that a roof project is going to take priority over a parking lot project, we can do a budget amendment, right? I mean, things, our operations tend to be somewhat dynamic, and it's not unusual to reassess priorities anytime during a particular budget year and make modifications as needed to make sure that the right priorities are being addressed.
Thank you. The other issue I have is, which would be the phase two of the East River Bank stabilization project, and if not addressing the river wall first, I think this project would be inappropriate to set aside funds to do this project without an aggressive approach on the wall. I do think it is a go-ready project, and I think it would be something that we could look at again next year, but I think for this year's budget, I don't think it's appropriate to have in there without addressing the sinking by the clock tower or any other issues that we have. The other thing I have is to go back to the East River Bank project. That $100,000 additional beautification money was not given to the Finance Committee until the last meeting, and with that being said, I wouldn't be in favor of increasing that to the extra $100,000 to, we need to get the East River Bank done, or the East Grand Avenue project completed, but the $100,000 that was thrown in last minute, I don't think is appropriate. The other thing I have is, and remind you, this is just on Public Works, so I kind of have a laundry list of things that we need to go over tonight, and the other thing is the aquatics. I am in favor of a pool. I do know that we bonded for $2.5 million in the past, and we had spent, I believe it's $800,000 in design. I would be in favor of bonding for an additional 250, or $2.5 million, but I definitely think the scope of work should change. I don't agree with the current design, and basically, you have $5 million to put a pool in, and that's where I'm at with the aquatics. I think the rest of the money should be taken out of the budget, and that's pretty much what I have for Public Works. Thank you.
Alderman Coath?
Thank you, Your Honor. For fellow members of the council and those watching at home and those here tonight, in reference to the budget, by state law, we have to submit our budget by the first day of December. So, if we vote no on it tonight and send it back, we have 10 days to put together a new budget. I'm up for it. Who else wants to take off from work and come here and do a new budget? Are we going to have, we got Thanksgiving coming up? If we vote no for this budget, from what I'm hearing, if this is what we want to do, are we going to take enough time to go through this budget line by line and identify every one of these issues, and then have another council meeting before December 1st to put a budget through? Or are we going to approve the budget and then go through it and make adjustments in the future? I think that's the question we have to ask ourselves. I understand the citizens' concerns here, and I've been down to, personally, in my own personal life, I've rubbed nickels together and I stretched pennies so thin I made wire out of them before I spent them. I know what it means to live on a budget. But I think the time to argue the budget and go through it line by line would have been at the committee meetings and every budget meeting prior to getting to council. We got a lot to think about if we want to redo this budget and redo all these projects. We got projects we have started, and if we defund them and leave them half-open, half-finished, I think we're going to have a bigger budget issue when some citizen goes through a project that's half-completed, falls, hurts themselves, and then goes to the law offices, does a do, he cheat them and howl, and sues the city for millions of dollars. But I want to know what this council's wishes are. The budget, I can take it or leave it. I understand the citizens' concerns that are here, but if we want to vote no for it, let's vote no for it, and then let's make sure that we get enough time set aside in 10 days that we go through this budget. I'll go tell my boss, I'll take whatever time off from work I need to sit through that budget meeting and redo it. But I don't think sitting here tonight for the next three hours, going line by line through the budget's going to accomplish it now, and that's just my two cents on it.
Alderman Katna?
I would like to say, as a member of the Finance Committee, I feel this budget has been fully vetted through many meetings that we all haven't agreed on stuff at, but I have to add to Mr. Coath's comments, to come back on all that now, all that time we've put in when we've discussed all these topics, and say this isn't the budget we wanted, it doesn't make any sense to me. I'm in favor of passing this budget, we've spent a lot of time putting it together, and these issues could have been addressed then before this meeting. So, if we didn't want to approve this budget, we shouldn't be to this point by now.
Other requests to speak, Alderman Kellogg?
The Finance and Property had several meetings, almost weekly, and each of the meetings ended about 11 o'clock at night, and items went line by line by line, and there was disagreement among the aldermen, and I attended two or three, but I watched the others on TV, and there might be disagreement now, but you have the budget, and going back to what Jo mentioned, that you can amend the budget once we have the budget identified. But the thing is, is that you got to get the projects, you know, scheduled and have the fundings available, and then look at the budgets. When the proposals come to the Public Works and the Finance and Property, then you can make those fine-tuning adjustments. To make the fine-tuning adjustments, why do we spend six, I don't know how many weeks, let's say six weeks until 11 o'clock at night, we just waste our time then, and you're going to get, you're going to make the changes now in two or three weeks? I'm going to vote in favor of the budget, because the departments went through it, the mayor went through it, the Finance and Property went through it. I don't know how many hours they spent, some disagreement, but because of the disagreements, doesn't mean that we can't pass this budget and then deal with issues as they approach during the year. That's where I'm going to be voting for the budget.
Alderman Coath?
Your Honor, I'll just, with what I said earlier, I'll let the cards fall with the fall. I make a motion to approve the budget, and if it doesn't approve, I guess we'll be having a lot of special meetings, but make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution adopting the tax levy in 2019 City of Wisconsin Rapid Budget, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Katna, motion by Coath, second by Katna. Any further discussion or requests to speak? Alderman Kubasak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I didn't have an opportunity to speak, and now this is, I guess. It's a case where I've been accused of being more liberal than Ted Kennedy, and I guess I've never really contested that, but it's a case where, in my personal life, I am very frugal. I don't have a house payment because I paid off my house. I don't have a truck payment because I paid off my truck. So, I do live this lifestyle of looking at items, and although we did have a number of budget meetings, I do remember a lot of disagreements, but I don't remember agreements on everything that's in here in this budget document. And one of the things that we've been talking about is this east, second phase, East River Bank project, and there is that outstanding line item of being some type of bleacher system or something, which caused the amount of money, because we're, and I'm sorry, to step back a little bit, we're getting DNR matching funds grant up to the tune of $650,000, $700,000, somewhere around there. Unfortunately, our matching portion is exceeding that by almost about as much as this particular structure, this added amenity in this project. And one of the things that I brought up at one of the budget meetings is, I said that I'd be absolutely in favor of this project minus that extra stuff. I said if we match what we're getting from the matching grant and then look at it instead of having so much more added to it, we limit it to what we need rather than what we want, I said that that's fine. And it was suggested during one of the budget meetings that if that's the case, then at the budget hearing, we would vote up or down on that particular project. And now, as I'm hearing further, we can do budget amendments into the year, once the budget is approved into 2019, we can do budget amendments to potentially remove stuff. How about let's remove it now and do a budget amendment later, after we get to the point where we actually agree on these projects? Because we, I don't remember wholesalingly agreeing on most of the line items. I think that the meetings just ended, and we decided to have another meeting and another meeting, and now we got to the point where we're here tonight, but it's obvious that there is no major consensus on a handful of particular line items, not necessarily the whole thing, because if we would go through the whole thing, we would be here till next week. But I think that there's only a handful of things, we could easily potentially correct them in the next eight days, 10 days, whatever it is. I'm available anytime, so if I got to take off of work, I don't have vacation time, I don't get PTO, so if I take a day off of work, I lose that money. I don't care. This is more important to me, is getting it right the first time, instead of saying, hey, you know what, we're going to pass a rather large inflated budget, and then we're going to worry about it next year. I've never operated that way in my personal finances, and I don't, for the $500 that I make a month on the city council, I'm not going to do that here either. So, as far as I'm concerned, if we've got a motion on the floor in a second to approve the budget, I want to hold out the East River Bank Bike Path Project as a separate up or down vote on that.
So, as per the items with the committee reports, I'll call for, is there unanimous consent to hold that item out? Is there any objections to holding that out?
I object.
I object, yeah.
We've got objections, so remind us.
In the third district, I have constituents on both sides of that river, and I've had many calls, and you got the letter here today, that they want that to continue, and we've had a spokesperson at our last Finance and Property, a businessman from downtown encouraging it. They see the thriving city with that phase two, how the phase two is implemented, and if there's amendments as we go through that, that's different. But I guess I don't want to hold that out, because I, my constituents want to see that in the budget and want to see phase two come to fruition, and I think as a common council, we can work through that process, so that's my feeling.
I think just a further clarification related to the tuck pointing, I think Jo, and I don't know if that communication, Jo, I said if that was communicated back to the council, I know we talked about it at our finance meeting, that any infrastructure improvements that were deemed critical, especially in relationship to the tuck pointing of the river wall, that those would take place first, and we would address scope changes all within the approved budget amount. So, whatever it took to address those critical items, maybe you've got something further to add on that?
No, that's correct. I mean, we could certainly address those, any critical items along with the project. No, that's correct. I mean, we could certainly address those, any critical items along with the project. And it would probably be prudent to do so in some cases.
Alderperson Blazer, you had your, grabbed my attention, I thought.
I'm sorry, thank you. I was just going to reiterate, though, that, you know, everyone's talking about how we can make changes later. But as I asked earlier, once this budget's approved, the scope is already, you're approving the money, and it's, it could be let out for bid. So we're not going to bill to add or remove or, or do anything to these projects once this budget's approved, correct? Or am I still incorrect on this?
Well, I would advocate if the hot button issue is to debate some of the scope items. I mean, I think we should further identify what the cost of the tuck pointing is, so we know what that is and what the impact of that project is. So I would say, in the first breath, the project is being approved, the allocation of the funding is being established. But given that that, to me, is an issue that is shared maybe by all of us on the council, that we address the cost and understand what that is, that I would suggest we seek a referral to include the tuck pointing in that project. And then therefore, before we let the project, we know generally the project cost. Because it, it may be cheaper, most cost effective for us to do it in our off season, instead of having a contractor do the work, you know? So I think we need to explore that further as it relates to what areas are critical and what areas of the park will be disturbed. Joe?
Well, and, you know, for any project like this, staff's not in a position to commit the city to funding these types of projects, right? So I mean, we, we still need to go through a process and look for a, a motion to advertise and, and solicit bids. You know, so there's, there's, there's going to be plenty of time to still evaluate the scope of the project, evaluate the estimate of costs, make sure that we've got the right, the right project in front of the committee and the council before we let the thing.
And while we don't want to get in the habit of declining award, I mean, that certainly would be the last recourse, I think, by the council.
I don't want to see that happen.
Okay. Alderperson Graff, Shane did that, address your, Alderperson Graff?
I just want to remind the council that last spring, there were some design changes made to Phase One. And if it wasn't for the mayor and Joe Terry to negotiate that, that money down, that was an additional $100,000 to the cost that was out of the control of the council. And then in September, we decided to ask for approval for $38,000, and we didn't have a problem with it. To go back to Shane's point, once we approve this budget, all of these things are, it's a go. You're going to let the project, you're not going to pull services, you're not going to pull projects after you talk to contractors, and you say this is the scope of the project. You're not going to turn around at the end and say, well, we're going to cut that project out. That's not true. We didn't do it for Phase One. Why would Phase Two be any different? And I would just reurge everybody that I think there was a little bit more vetting to this. And although I was at almost every, I don't think I missed the Finance Committee meeting on the budget. Through all of those meetings and late nights and everything else, the only proposal that got changed in the Finance Committee was $20,000 for the LTE position at the community development, or for the ordinance control officer, the part-time ordinance. That's the only thing that got changed in all of those meetings. That's it. We didn't, police chief during our meeting, we had talked about body cameras and other things, and that didn't get added to the budget. That actually just got moved around, because we found $10,000 or $20,000 or whatever, and we just moved money around. We didn't change his budget. The fire chief, when we, we met with you, we said we need to have not curtains but doors, and look at the fact that we have women in our fire stations now. And that I don't think the city should be put in a position to accept litigation based on the fact that we don't have anything else but a curtain crossing where women change and men change. We tried to appropriate more money. That didn't get changed in the budget. Money got moved around. So I would just urge the council, I think there's more things in this budget. The $45,000 for the MEED Aquatic. I don't feel that we should be budgeting $45,000. It's, we're hiding $45,000. I think there's a better spot for it. This budget is inflated. I don't think, to go to Mr. Coath's argument and comments, which I appreciate, is I don't think that it would be appropriate for us to try to change things after we do it. We would have to do it now. And to go through the budget line item by line item isn't the concern here. The concern is to go after specific budgets, specific things, vet them out and let it be where it lays. We have 10 days to do it. I don't see the issue. And during the Finance Committee, Committee meetings, we were unable to get it done through conversation. Once again, the only thing that changed was $20,000 for LTE position. $58 million budget, two years in a row.
Joe, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment related to the Phase One project, East Riverbank project, and, and the bid that was let for that project. After that project was let, the scope of the project was changed fairly significantly because the bids didn't come in where we anticipated them to. There, there were significant number of changes made to reduce the scope of that project. A number of things were removed. Alternates were passed on.
I apologize, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I sat in those meetings, and wasn't the purpose and change of scope and the extra money acquired because of DNR constraints and DNR recommendations, that is what you're telling us? Now you're telling us that it was because of the budget that was allocated, and that we were, there was a reduce, a reduction in the work?
There was a reduction in scope. We, we pulled out the restroom facility. We pulled out lighting. We reduced the amount of railing.
Removed fishing jetties per DNR requirement.
Right, moved the fishing jetties per DNR requirement. You know, there, there were a lot of changes made to that project so that we hit our budget number. And, you know, some of those things could be potentially put in later. But, but to suggest that, that it's just carte blanche, go ahead, that, that's simply not true. You know, as, as staff, we take your budget that you pass very, very seriously. And to make sure that the scope of the project meets that. I mean, we will, we will come in with this project under budget at the end of the day.
It's funny you say that, and I, and I think it's good that you brought this up again, is that this is our budget, right? I mean, we ultimately have control of the budget, but yet we're not getting the direction from staff members. I feel like we are being told this is what we should vote for, so we do. I don't see department heads coming to the City Council meetings. I mean, I feel like there are certain things around, and it has been going around since I've been elected, that I'm strongly against. So once again, just to remind all the aldermen, this is our budget, this is the time to make the changes. Because after we do or don't make the changes, moving forward, it's out of our controls, because we basically set the parameters and then let the city staff handle it.
I think as a point of clarification, city staff request a certain allotment from the City Council to perform the duties of which they think need to be performed. I take offense to say that there's a lot of excess in the budget, because I expect department heads, the professionals that they are, to prepare a budget request that meets their obligations and the expectations that they set forth for their staff. So I just want to point out that I, I would take offense to, on behalf of city staff who work for the city every day, that request of, an egregious amount of money to do the work that they do in their various departments. And, and I think to a further extent, the six weeks or, and probably eight meetings, I don't know exactly the count from the Finance Committee walking through those items, there was a significant amount of time invested by city staff and by all of you that attended the meetings to ask the questions. And I believe every question that was asked was answered. And while we may not have agreed, we certainly have tweaked some of the things related to scope along the way, and I hope that we got it to a better place. You know, I, I feel that, but maybe certainly we can't please everyone, and that's not what this is about. But certainly if there's been issues raised, I think those questions have been answered. For those that directly to staff, they were, I, I can speak on behalf of staff. They were directed to respond to Alderperson's questions, and if you did seek a question, it was answered.
Other requests to speak? Other requests to speak? We have a motion to approve. Alderperson Zerflu?
I would just, I just want to, I'll reiterate what you said, and I agree, because I asked an enormous amount of questions through emails, and I'm very appreciative of the mayor, Joe Terry, Joe Ickstead, for, I know they, they took time out of their schedule and day to compile and send me emails, and I do greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other requests to speak? We have a motion to approve, which would be attachment number four. It's not labeled as such. Any further requests to speak? Tim, anything further? Nothing further. Motion is to approve. We're going to move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Roll call, Blazer? Kuboschak, nay. Aye by Katna. Motion carried, five ayes, three nays. Again, thank you for all of your engagement on that. Move on to item number 11, which is consider a resolution ordering a special election in the spring of 2019 for the city clerk position, item number five. Alderperson, actually Attorney Shill, do you want to speak to that at all before we, I guess it's on the backside of attachment, the old version of attachment number four?
Attachment four. This is basically the resolution ordering the special election that you had requested last month. The order has to contain certain information, and that's what's laid out here. The, the election is a special election which coincides with the regular spring election. And the term would begin May 1 of 2019 and end on April 30 of 2022. The nomination papers cycle would be the same as the other spring election offices, which would be all of the odd-numbered district alderpersons. And if a primary is necessary, that would be held on Tuesday, February 19. I don't know if anyone has any questions about this at all.
Alderperson Blazer?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the resolution.
Yes.
Attachment of the resolution.
We have a motion to approve a resolution by Blazer and a second by Raoul. Move into discussion. Other requests to speak? Alderperson Katna?
I would just like to say that because this is an elected position and it was vacated so early, I am in favor of having a special election to fill this, so that the people do get to have, have their voice heard in filling this position.
Other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by approving the ordinance as written. All signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item number 12. Consider adoption, consider for adoption, the actions of the standing committees of the common council. Item A is the Finance and Property meeting held on October 18th, first budget meeting in October there. Alderperson Zerflu?
Thank you, Your Honor. And there are four meetings.
Yes, please go ahead and.
Finance Property Committee met at 6:30 PM on Thursday, October 18th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. A list of all others attending is on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 6:30. Item number two, review and discuss 2019 budget and department budget requests, with a focus on reviewing the Department of Public Works budgets. The Finance Committee reviewed the Engineering Department, Parks and Rec, Street Department, and Public Works Construction project budgets. No action was taken. Item three, set next meeting date, which was on October 30th at 5:00 PM. Item number four was adjournment. There was a motion, second, to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously. And it doesn't appear as I have a time on this report. But with that, I would move for adoption of the report.
And I guess I would allow you to, to do them all, if you'd like I didn't read B, and B, which is 30th of October, C, 6th of November. If you wish to do them all at the same.
Okay.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, and, oh, yeah, that might be easiest, in case there's items to be held up. All right, we'll proceed with the motion to approve by Zerflu. Is there a second? Second by Blazer. Any further discussion on that report? Seeing none, motion, consider to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item 12B is reported, the Finance Property Committee meeting on October 30th.
Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 30th, first floor conference room, City Hall. All members were present. A list of others is on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two, review and discuss 2019 budget and department budget requests, with a focus on reviewing the River Cities Community Access and Community Development budgets. Finance Committee reviewed the River Cities Community Access, Community Development, and other departmental budgets. No action was taken. Item three, set next meeting date, which was November 6, 2018, at 4:00 PM. Item four was adjournment. Motion, a second, to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously. And I'll move for adoption of this report.
A second by, motion by Zerflu, second by Blazer. Any discussion on that report? Seeing no requests to speak, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item 12C is reported, the Finance Property Committee meeting on November 6th.
Finance Property Committee met at 4:00 PM, Tuesday, November 6th, first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. List of others attending is on file in the clerk's office. Item number two, review and consider for approval, a special events application from Wood County Health Department and Healthy People Wood County Recreate Health Coalition for Wisconsin Rapids Downtown Farmer's Market on Thursdays and Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, from June 2019 to October 2019, to include vending, closure of First Ave South from West Grand up to Goggins, closure of Johnson Street between Second Ave South and First Ave South, closure of West Grand Avenue Bridge from First Ave South to Second Street South on Thursdays only. There was a motion and a second to approve the special events application as indicated, to include vending and closure of First Ave South from West Grand Avenue to Chase Street. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three, review and consider for approval, a renewal of the taxi cab license issued to all aboard Taxi Cab LLC, Shannon Sanders, and Monty Hempner. There was a motion and a second to approve the renewal of the license. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, review and consider for approval, a 2019 Waterworks and Lighting Commission budget. There was a motion and a second to approve the 2019 Waterworks and Lighting Commission budget as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Item number five, review and discuss 2019 budget and department budget requests, with a focus on reviewing the McMillan Library, wastewater, municipal court, and capital projects. The Finance Committee reviewed the McMillan Library wastewater and capital project budgets. No action was taken. Item six, beverage operator license applications. There was a motion and a second to approve the beverage operator license applications, which are on file in the clerk's office. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve checks 74078 through 74430, and manual checks 99779 through 99799. That motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, set next meeting date, which was set for Tuesday, November 13th at 5:00 PM, to review the 2019 budget. Item number nine, an open session. The committee will vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. There was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken, and all members voted in the affirmative. Sub A, in closed session, the committee discussed a request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated to lease space in the Centralia Center. Sub B, the committee may return to open session and take action, or make recommendations regarding item 10A, or may adjourn in closed session. In closed session, there was a motion and a second to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously. This meeting adjourned at 6:25 PM. And with that, I will make a motion to approve this report.
Motion to approve by Zerflu, second by Blazer. Any further discussion? Any discussion on that report? Seeing none, move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item D, Finance and Property, November 13th.
Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, November 13th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. A list of others attending is on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review and consider for approval, a shared ride taxi operating contract and public transit lease agreement between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and Wheels of Independence Incorporated. There was a motion and a second to approve the shared ride taxi operating contract and public transit lease agreement between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and Wheels of Independence. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three, review and consider for approval, a lease for space at the Centralia Center between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater. There was a motion and a second to approve the lease. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, review and consider for approval, the City of Wisconsin Item number four, review and consider for approval, the City of Wisconsin Rapids 2019 budget. There was a motion and a second to transfer the $20,000 plus fringe benefit costs allocated for a part-time ordinance control officer and the ordinance control budget to contingency. That motion carried unanimously. There was a motion and a second to approve the City of Wisconsin Rapids 2019 budget. That motion carried with Blazer voting in the negative. Item number five, set next meeting date. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for December 4, 2018, at 5:00 PM. Item number six is adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. That motion carried unanimously. And I'll make a motion to approve this report.
Motion by Zerflu, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Katna. Any discussion on the report? Yep, Katna. She already had Blazer written down. Throwing her off. Any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item E, report of the Public Works Committee meeting held November 6th. Alderperson Raoul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present, as were Alderperson Blazer, Kellogg, and Katna. A list of all others attending is on file in the Clerk's office. Item one, the DPW report was reviewed. Item two, review and consider approval of the relocation order in Rightaway Platte for Second Avenue South, State Highway 54, and Seneca Road. DOT Project 6999-03-22 is moved and seconded to approve the relocation order in Rightaway Platte. Motion carried unanimously. Item three, review and consider a resolution approving the North Central Wisconsin Stormwater Coalition Cooperative Agreement. It is moved and seconded to approve the resolution, authorizing the stormwater management cooperative agreement. Motion passed unanimously. Item four, review and consider approval of the preliminary resolutions declaring intent to levy special assessments for the following public work and improvement projects as described in the capital improvement plan. A, 12th Street sidewalk, the west side, from Huntington Avenue to Wood Avenue, proposed 2019 budget. B, 11th Street, North Apricot Street to Washington Street, for 2021, I do believe. C, 15th Street, North Norton Street to Apricot Street, and again, 2021. It was moved by Kupchak, seconded by Graff, to approve the preliminary resolutions for the list of projects described. Motion passed unanimously. Five, discuss refuse collection ordinance in preparation of automated collection. Garbage collection policy discussion summary on 11/6 was discussed in detail. Moved, seconded to approve the garbage collection policy discussion summary with the following modifications. Remove service to downtown apartments above commercial businesses. Additionally, staff was instructed to move forward with drafting the ordinance consistent with the language provided in document titled Garbage Collection Policy Discussion Summary from November 6th, and that motion passed unanimously. Item six, the referral list was reviewed. Add items, referral regarding mowing the slope between Daley and the Expressway and One Mile Creek. Flood study. And remove items proposed, let's see, number six. Item seven, it was moved and seconded to adjourn. The motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 8:45 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
Got a motion to approve by Raoul. Is there a second? A second by Zerflu. Any further requests to speak? Any requests to speak on that report? We'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item F, report of the Human Resources Committee meeting held on November 9th. Alderperson Coth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Report of the Human Resource Committee from November 9, 2018. Human Resource Committee meeting met at 1:00 PM on Friday, November 9, 2018, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Those in, those in attendance were myself, Alderperson Zerflu, Alderperson Kellogg. Also present was Alderperson Blazer, Attorney Schill, Human Resources Director Don Erman, and Chief Police Levens, did I say that correctly? Travis Shalesky and Ryan Giefer. Meeting was called to order at 1:00 PM. Next item was review and consider for approval, the revised overtime and on-call policy. The revised policy was a request from Chairperson Coth. As a result, the council approving $30 per day for on-call pay wastewater operators. Chairperson Coth made a motion to approve the policy as presented. The motion was seconded by Alderperson Kellogg. Motion carried. Item number three was to review and consider for approval, the revised section of the pay provisions for administration for non-union positions policy. This was in response to Chairperson Coth's referral. The HR Committee previously discussed the additional pay for the deputy clerk due to the vacancy of the city clerk position. The purpose of the revision of this policy is to provide guidelines for additional pay that can be applied fairly and consistently. Alderperson Zerflu made a motion to approve the policy as presented. The motion was seconded by Alderperson Kellogg. Motion carried. Item number four was discussion clarification concerning Alderperson Blazer's policy referral. Alderperson Blazer clarified that his referral is to review the existing requesting requisitioning personnel and recruitment and selection policies. He explained that it is the intent to grant additional authority to human resources around posting positions in the recruitment and the selection process and to remove the mayor from the process. There was a brief discussion around the current approval, posting, and hiring practices. A motion was made by Alderperson Kellogg to review and revise the requisitioning personnel and recruitment and selection policies and bring them back to the HR Committee. The motion was seconded by Chairperson Coth. Motion carried. Item five, referral from Alderperson Kupchak regarding a temporary hold on out-of-state conferences for city employees. There is brief discussion about this referral, and the consensus was that out-of-state travel is currently reviewed and approved through line items in the city budget. Motion was made by Chairperson Coth to maintain the existing policy and practices of attendance at all conferences, including out-of-state conferences. Alderperson Kellogg seconded this motion. Motion carried. Item number six was the discussion around internal process for tracking and responding to HR Committee referrals. There was brief discussion concerning the number of referrals that have been made recently to the HR Committee. An internal referral form was presented from the HR, to the HR Committee to assist in tracking of the referrals. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth to adopt and use the HR referral form for the HR Committee. The motion was seconded by Alderperson Zerflu. Motion carried. Item number seven, in open session, a motion was made by Alderperson Zerflu to go into closed session under section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin state statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The motion was seconded by Alderperson Kellogg. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. In closed session, the committee discussed a negotiation strategy regarding successor labor agreements with IAFF 425 and WRPPA. The meeting adjourned at 3:09 PM. With this, I move for adoption.
Motion by Coth to approve. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried unanimously. Item 12, sorry, 13, right? Yep, 13. Reports of other, reports of other committees, commissions, and boards, department reports. Item A is the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority, held on October 26th. Item B, the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, held on October 17th. Item C, the Police and Fire Commission, held on November 14th. Item D, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department report for October. Item E, the Waterworks and Lighting Commission, held on October 10th and 26th. Item F, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held on November 7th. Item G, the Southwood County Airport Commission, held on October 11th. And item H, the Park and Recreation Commission, held on October 8th and November 12th. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding those?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
Motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Katna. Any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, or motion carried unanimously, I suppose. Item 14, referral to communication to committees.
Your Honor.
Alderperson Coth?
In light of how the budget portion of our council meeting went tonight, I have three referrals that I would like to make to the Property and Finance Committee if they're applicable to be put on your agenda there, Joe. The first one is, since bid letting was an issue tonight, that property and finance is notified before any bids are let, even though it's approved in the budget. Just so that property and finance has a heads-up that the bid is going to be let out. Number two, I'd like to see something on the agenda to have the public hearing for the budget moved before a council meeting. This getting down to the wire and having a public hearing the night that we are going to approve the budget is simply ridiculous. If the budget needs to be amended, it should be done before it gets to this point. Number three is, as some of the citizens pointed out, we're paid for this position and we're expected to do our jobs. And I know nationally, the couple times when the federal government shut down because they couldn't agree on a budget, I've heard people complain that even though the government shuts down, all those guys in Congress still get their pay. Well, maybe we should lead by example, and if this council cannot get a balanced budget done on time when it's due by the state of Wisconsin, maybe we should explore the option that this council does not get paid until we put forth a budget that's approved.
Other.
I second that.
Other referral of communication to committees? Other referral of, Alderperson Blazer?
Maybe I should, it's not a referral, but Tim, was the last time when we did not vote for a budget on, because we used to do a hearing before, the budget, and it was done on the same night. But when was the last time that we, that a vote, a budget was voted down and City of Wisconsin Rapids government shut down?
Not in my, not to my knowledge. I mean, I mean, just to go to, I mean, in, in past, we used to have the, in the week preceding the public hearing, you used to have a committee of the whole, you know, so that's something that we could explore too. So that, you know, when it comes to the public hearing, it's truly the, the public input and then, you know, you adopt the budget, so.
I agree, because if we're going to have a public hearing and, and 1,000 people show up to vote against or discuss something in the budget, it's, Alderman Coth is right, there's no adjustment that could be made on the night of realistically.
Other referrals. Alderperson Kupchak.
I don't have a referral, but can I get a clarification that if the budget isn't approved, we would still be able to go through December 31st? Because the 2018 budget is approved, correct? So we could actually, despite the fact of your suggestion, state statute says December 1st, the city as an organization wouldn't actually stop or shut down until December 31st because the appropriations already been made. So I guess I just wanted to make that clarification.
Well, actually, that, that isn't, I mean, I guess technically, what do you mean by shutdown? But there are certain, because the county does all our, our tax bills, we have to abide, you know, there wouldn't be any tax bills going out if we didn't get them their information by December 1st. And then there's other, some things on the third Thursday in December, there's a number of things that have to happen in December, and that's why generally, they basically say, although the state law does not say it has to be done by December 1st, all of those different municipalities or the counties that you're dealing with and all the other reporting requirements have to be done, you know, beginning December 1st. So I guess that's kind of why it, we've never, not met that, as far as I know. But it would really be a hassle and the county would not be very happy with us. I don't know if Tim wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, the, the county has to have the tax levy so they can generate the tax bills because we mail them out on the December 15th. So that's, that's why the levy has to be adopted and submitted to the county.
Correct, yeah. I, I apologize. What I wasn't, I wasn't looking at the deadline to actually have the submittal to the county treasurer's office. It was the actual aspect of if we actually had a physical shutdown of locking the doors, putting chains and padlocks and whatever they do in DC, that wouldn't actually occur until January 1st, which actually is a holiday, so it'd be January 2nd. That, because the appropriation is made through the whole year.
Yes, maybe.
Alderperson Raoul?
Your Honor, if I may, I just would like a minute to talk about one of the referrals. I know it'll be referred at the appropriate time. But I can remember budgets being turned down, but I can remember with the committee as a whole, I believe is how we ran it, on the night of the council, but, and with the council president running the meeting, I do believe, if my memory is correct on that. We had some good draw, knocked down and dragged all fights over that. We argued over $2,500 to put in or take out for Christmas decorations. And that's a minor one, so you get on to the big stuff to see what we used to do. But that's why, and I agree, that to do this in the process we're doing is not the correct way. We have to look at it changed to be done. I guess it'll go back to how it was 20 years ago, if, maybe. But that's where the debate and that is all done, and then the public has their chance to come in and talk to us to, with their concerns on it, so. Thank you.
Alderperson Blazer?
I tried, and I, at the time, I didn't best know how to ask, but I remember asking where we were in projects, and people are giving me information. Maybe lesson learned here next May, whatever the capital improvement projects are for next year, 2020. Then maybe in May, we sit down and go through those line by line and at, wherever the council is at that time, and then discuss those things so we can maybe even avoid it at a budget hearing or a budget meeting through finance because we've already sat down and we're all well aware of what are the scope of those projects are at that time.
I think that's very, that's consistent with the expectation we have for staff is to really come up with that cap, buildings and infrastructure both, right? Because, you know, as has been raised tonight, there are some issues, maintenance issues that may, questions have been raised about what the, where they stand, so.
Yeah, if we can get that done long before November.
Well, I think from a finance director's perspective, to prepare a budget with all these dynamic parts and then questioning on big-ticket ticket projects, which oftentimes have a labor implication, right, of where are we going to spend our labor dollars, I think is a, is a big item, so point well made. Alderperson Kupchak, Coth, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just want to kind of clarify, use the word shutdown of federal government. And to my understanding, and Your Honor, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when we don't have a budget done, well, if the state, the federal government, the state and municipality are all different. If the federal government doesn't get their budget done, they shut down. If the state of Wisconsin doesn't get their budget done, they don't shut down, they just run out of continuance. The danger of us not getting a budget done is, to what I understand, we would end up running at the previous budget allocation from the previous year. Nothing would be increased or decreased. But then if we do need money, it's not budgeted, and it's harder to go back and try to figure it out later than it is to just move forward with a budget process. And the nature of my referrals is, is to try to make sure that when we get to this point next year, that we get to this council meeting, we're looking at a balanced budget that has been vetted by our Property and Finance Committee, that has been discussed among all eight aldermen, and something that the citizens have had an input on, so we don't spin our wheels, so to speak.
Thank you. Other referral communications. Alderperson Graff?
I wasn't going to say anything, and I just want to be clear. I don't think it's inappropriate at all to have a healthy debate at a city council meeting. I think all, all too often, we try to debate everything in a, a committee meeting. But when other aldermen can't make a certain committee meeting, this would be the time to vet those issues. So I don't want to lose sight of the fact that a healthy discussion during a city council meeting is, is just that, it's healthy. So I just want to make that clear.
Other referral of communication to committees, otherwise entertaining motion to adjourn? Alderperson Kupchak? Oh, thank you. Yeah, before, thank you. Can we look at your calendars for the first week of December? Is the preference to hold a special meeting on a committee meeting night? For example, the first Tuesday in December? Or holding an.
Or holding an off-committee, uh, night? That would be in, pertaining to the, um, appointment of the city clerk? Exactly, a special city council meeting, yeah, it wouldn't be just a committee or... Well, I offer either, I, I, I'm not sure. What's the preference?
Exactly. Excuse me, exactly. So the third, the fourth, the fifth, I guess that I would, I would offer either of those. Yes.
Well, no, it would be to be the interim clerk until the special election. So I'm assuming it, you know, depending on the conversations with the candidate in terms of, I'm envisioning that it's going, I mean, I guess the appointment could take place immediately, but they might have another employer that they need to give notice to, so it might be. Right, because they're not going to quit their job until maybe they know. So, yeah, so I'm envisioning, maybe if the meeting's on the third, it might be you would agree to the appointment effective December, whatever, or January 1st, or something like that. But I'm sure that the mayor will have that in the appointment letter, so.
Sure.
Mike, what's the urgency, I guess? What, what's, what's the difference between doing it two weeks later at the council meeting?
Well, I think probably to give folks that are currently providing the clerk duties, city attorney and finance director, department heads that are working on agendas, and, yeah, I mean, I think, that's, I think the relief is just being able to focus on their core duties and not have to, yeah, exactly. Well, and I think there's just the added workload of the upcoming election, and having that extra person on staff, since the budget's approved, you know, for that, for that, for the city clerk position, that that person can help facilitate the pulling of papers and, you know, dealing with the nomination papers, and then, you know, anything else that comes with the getting on the ballot in the spring. I guess that would be the other, more urgent thing of, of anything else. Excuse me. Any additional thoughts, I guess? I mean, if we were to propose a meeting?
Right, yeah. So is there a preference on committee night or off-committee night? Perhaps Monday, the, you were saying, Joe, that your preference was Wednesday? Wednesday or Thursday? Is there any issue with Wednesday at 5:00? Issue with Wednesday, the 5th, at 5:00?
Wednesdays are always tough for me, but if potentially 4:30, uh, on a Wednesday night, I could.
Or Tuesday before the committee meeting, before the, um, finance?
Tuesdays are fine, Thursdays are.
At like 4:30, could we do that at? Tuesday at 4:30, and then we notice finance to begin immediately after that special council meeting, or 5:00 if it is? Yeah. Yeah, I think we have to just.
Public Works at 9:00.
Yeah. Sorry, Tom. Okay, well, we'll, we'll, hearing no objection, we'll move at 4:30 on the 4th of December. All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn. And a motion by Zurflu, is there a second? Uh, second by Cothe, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carried unanimously, all adjourned. Wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and good luck if you're continuing to hunt and be safe.